Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, December 4th, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the City of the Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
Yes. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice, which is also posted on the municipal Bolton Board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of the meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP TV. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the republic, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
I will now take roll call. James Benano.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Eric Gallapo.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
John Moore.
Here.
Daniel Shanomeo is absent. Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Pedro Travella is absent. Vice Chair Michael Goonan is absent, and Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Here. All right. We're looking at the agenda, and I believe there has been requests for a modification.
Andy, Karas, I'm hearing both applications tonight. My request is to have the 527 Bangs Transformer heard first. That shouldn't hopefully take very long, which will leave us with a lot more time for the other application, not 700.
Okay. That's fine. We are going to have, it looks like maybe we have a lot on the calendar today on the agenda, so we'd like to just keep it, keep it brief, keep it to the point, and let's go.
Very good.
Andy, if I may, just for jurisdiction purposes, we just want to make sure the proposal is for which lots associated with this application, because your notice only refers to Lot 3
That's all it is.
And 9 and 10.
That's right.
We just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's Lot 3. The easement is going over Lot 3. That's where the transformer is.
Okay. So with that, for purposes of jurisdiction, I have reviewed the notices, and the notices are acceptable.
Okay.
And I noticed both on Lot 3 and the other.
And 9 and 10, yes, yes.
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure, because 2 is in some of the references, and I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, the plan that was submitted, so it's Lot 3.
Sure, Lot 2.
One of them showed in Lot 2.
That's the most. Joe? Why don't we get testimony on that?
Yeah, we just, we want to make sure we have jurisdiction.
All right. On Andy and Karas' behalf, the applicant, this is for the board's application. This brief history has, as we're aware, with your previous name, 527 Bangs, that was approved, that application, the original approved plans had it on there on the front sidewalk in the right-of-way assumed position of the transformer in the sidewalk. You're not able to do it within the sidewalk. There's insufficient capacity based upon JCPN L. Thus, we're going to put that lot on Lot 3, running an easement over to 527 lot. Very simple. We're not here for a parking lot tonight. There is a pending application on that that has been bifurcated, that's pending before the mayor council. That is on lots 2 and 3 down the parking lot. This for the transformer is limited to the lot that I previously mentioned, for which I advertised the lot for. And that's all I have, is just to put the transformer on that lot, so we can power up the building on 527 Bangs. And have Joe, put your name on the record.
Do you swear, affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Surely. It's Joseph Melee, M-E-L-E.
And your capacity for testifying tonight?
I'm a professional civil engineer, stated in terms of licensing.
And while we're swearing, them and I'll swear in our professionals as well, you swear affirm that the testimony you'll provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Joe, you've been admitted in San Antonio as an expert, so you're fully qualified to testify relative to this application. Am I correct?
Yes, and I testified in Asbury Park.
Before this board, am I correct?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to have you take a look at what's been marked as, I'm going to mark it as A1 in this Mid-Atlantic Plan, showing the transformer on Lot 3.
Just for the record, any objections to testimony as expert witness?
Very good, thank you.
We'll mark it as A1. It's dated 9/20/23. Joe, take a look at what I marked as A1, and today's date is the 4th.
Today is December 4th.
Take a look at what you marked as A1 for identification. This is the plan that you were familiar with, correct?
Sure, yes. It's a utility plan prepared by Mid-Atlantic, signed by myself, and indicating the location of the transformer.
And where's the transformer located?
Transformer's close to the street of Summerfield Avenue, located on Lot 3.
And you have the lot that a transformer running, solely on Lot 3, on 2, on 10, on Bangs Avenue.
Right. So that underground conduit from the transformer would stay within Lot 3 and extend to the lots on the adjoining property.
And there's no revisions being made at 527 Bangs Avenue, am I correct?
No.
Which says we're here simply for this transformer to be able to power up that building, am I correct?
That's correct.
There were two reports that were generated. Again, a lot of the report, excuse me, before the solely definitely a lot of the parking lot, we're not dealing with parking lot here as I indicated, we're before the mayor council that redeveloping plan for different parking lot, we need to get approval from the mayor council, so that is before then. In the event that we do get approval for them, we will then come back before this board with regard to that parking lot. That also serves as a reason why we don't have patents around the transformer, because once we're before the mayor council, they may have conditions relative to what they want to see around the transformer, that's going to be part of the parking lot. So before we get ahead of ourselves, let's not deal with that, let's deal with the transformer tonight, and then at a later time, we'll be able to deal with any plantings or any screening for the transformer. That's the extent of the testimony I have with regard to this witness. I don't think there's anything else relative to the transformer. Any questions?
I know, I know the professionals have questions.
Absolutely.
I'll start off, if you don't mind. So Andy, or Mr. Melee, the transformer, what's it going to serve?
It's serving the building on Bangs, 527 Bangs.
Okay. Is it, is it set up only to serve that building?
Yes.
It's not going to serve this lot?
That's something we might, we would look into, to see if that transformer is adequate to serve a future development. It may be possible.
There's no development right now that's being planned for that lot. That's why we can't say if it's going to deal with those lots. It's only the parking lot, it is on the parking lot.
So I guess, from a legal standpoint, the question's going to become, what is, what is this transformer? It's a principal structure for what? It has to be a principal structure, correct?
Well, when you look at the definition of structure, all right, when, there are two definitions within the journey code. Where is your building, where's this, it's not, because it's not being occupied. So the other definition to look at is whether or not it's a structure. It's not being occupied, but it is being used. There's a question of then whether or not it's actually a structure, because you have utilities all over the place. Normally, you don't have to get planning board approval for utilities.
But the difference here is, it's a utility supplying power to another lot.
Which is usually between the lot that it's on and the lot that it's supplying. It would be, it's between those which we have an easement for. So if it's approved, then I'm draft up an easement like we've done in the past, I've done utility easements previously, and then you and I would work through the terms of that easement, and then get that signed. No doubt, though, there needs to be an easement relative to this transformer.
Okay. All right. I know, I'm sure Donna and maybe Doug has questions.
Yeah, so what about in terms of, you mentioned briefly screening of the transformer. How can we address that now? Is that, I mean, I understand there's a pending application.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we wait until we have a determination from the mayor council? If they determine there's going to be an interim parking lot, there are guidelines within the CBD redevelopment plan that provide for an interim parking lot, then the board has discretion in terms of screening within that plan. It's solely up to the board then on an interim parking lot, so the board may have certain recommendations on that, which we would take into account and obviously work through. But we're getting ahead of ourselves, because we're not before the board for an interim parking lot, at this point.
But aren't we, don't we want the utility screened? Because you're asking us for a transformer, the location of a transformer. So wouldn't we want the transformer screened?
I'm fine if you want to get screening, however, as I indicated, when we come back to the parking lot, there may be an alteration in terms of what you want for screening.
Yeah, that's fair.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we hold off on the screening as a condition of an approval here? If we, the mayor council decide not to allow a parking lot, we would still come back to do screening for the transformer.
So that means that the transformer would not be screened for however long that will take?
Well, right now, it's before the mayor council. I expect an answer relatively quickly.
All right, well, so what's.
Let me finish. I expect an answer pretty soon. We will, before then, we're ready for a presentation. We present it before the mayor council, as we're required to do, under the redevelopment plan. Once I get a response, we then come back before the board to determine screening. We're going into the winter months. Nothing is going to plant there now anyway, the winter months. You would have to wait until the spring to do the planting.
So are you saying that no matter what the mayor council end up saying, whether it's a parking lot, whether it's whatever, they choose, say no to the parking lot, or whatever, you were screened no matter what?
Well, we would.
Either way?
Either, if it's an interim parking lot, we would still have to come back before the board, to teach the process.
Right, right.
When we present the parking lot, then we can go through all the screening taken into account.
Correct. And what if it's not going to be a parking lot?
Then we would agree that if they don't allow, we would then come back for the screening.
So you do screening either way?
Either way.
You could go a little quicker, and just do screening now.
But it may change depending upon the parking lot.
We understand that. How long?
I don't understand that.
Well, let me finish. How long do you think it would take for you to get a determination from mayor and council?
Hopefully, very soon, we're ready to get our presentation. I'm waiting for a response.
Well, I mean, what I'm wondering for the board purposes as a condition would be that we would set up a hearing for screening, and no matter, so that it's on the record, they don't have to renotice for that, unless they're coming back for the full parking lot and screening at that point, and set that date, we could set that date now and say, I don't know if it's March, three months.
Whatever, whatever's next is available.
Yeah, I mean, I would say March is an ideal time if we're talking about planting. So if we set, if you set that timeframe as they have to come back for that hearing for just screening alone, or by that time, they have to come back before us for what they're proposing with the parking lot?
The issue that I have with that is the fact that if they do come back with a parking lot, now we've, now we've created a date that now everyone, our professionals, have to run towards, when they don't have the information to be able to create their reports in time.
No, no, we don't, because what's going to happen is if they come in for a parking lot, they have to do notice. So that's going to be, that's going to be scheduled within whatever Marie says is scheduled.
Either way, we have to.
Yeah, they're going to have to notice for the parking lot. But if it's strictly coming back for screening, because there hasn't been a decision by mayor and council and the applicant on the parking lot, or any other proposal for the lot, they're going to have to come back here to address that. So we're not waiting months and months and months.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So what was your question, Donna?
Well, I don't understand what the parking lot design has to do with the location of the transformer screening. The objective of the screening is the view of it from the street, effectively. And it is, you know, if we can get Mr. Melee to put some testimony on about the location, it appears that, you know, it's there.
Right.
It's about eight feet from the property line. It's not likely to be a parking space in that area, because that's not a permitted location. So why can't we just figure out the screening now?
I agree. I don't see a reason why we can't do the screening now.
If you want to, if you want to ask for that.
I just need a second. No, go ahead.
It's going to screen the parking lot. You can probably, I'm planning to screen the transformer. It's not, we do it all at once. Do you want it? Do you want it? Um, well, no, you're hanging on.
Okay. So, you know, I've got a lot of stuff in my report, but can we just clarify, so the transformer is there, correct?
Correct.
And it's a 500?
Yeah, KBA.
KBA transformer that is only going to serve 527 Bangs, as far as we know at this time.
Right now, right now.
Correct.
And how is it serving 527 Bangs? An underground service line?
Yes, underground secondaries from the transformer through, through the, through the lot, probably runs 80 feet or so, 80 to 90 feet to the new building, 527.
Have the transmission lines already been installed?
I, I don't. They're just second, they're just secondary services. I imagine they have been.
Should someone know?
They have been.
Well, I'm only.
You may not know.
Yeah. I'm asking only because the plan that we're referring to shows a location.
Well, we're showing items as if they're proposed, but they're actually existing.
Okay.
Well, it's a bit, we don't think that they are.
The photo of the property in Donna's report shows that parking lot torn up closer to the property line.
Yeah, so, and I think Doug also did a site inspection, his observation was that the line is actually running along that easterly property line, not in the middle of the two lots.
Or the western.
The western property line of Lot 3. So again, if you're not in charge of any of the constructions, you may not have that knowledge.
I could update, I could update the plan, but it sounds like it's still located within Lot 3 in its entirety, the way you're describing it.
Yeah, that, I don't think that's necessarily the issue, it's just the location on your plan might be wrong.
Yeah, so we'll have to.
We'll double check on that, but you can jump up.
That's going to be important when we draft an easement, obviously. We want the easement to follow the existing.
Right, because we also have in, in the application file, the grading utility and inversion control plan from Burton Engineering. It's revised 10/24/23, and it shows a different location for that service connection. All right.
This is the location that we discussed.
Okay, so the, so the plan by Burton Engineering should be disregarded.
The only testimony tonight is by Mr. Melee on A1.
Right, but then that has to be disregarded and probably stated in the resolution, that that should be disregarded, because if somebody looks at that in the file, they see two different things.
But now, what you do is, when you present an application, the only evidence that goes in is that evidence that we provided testimony on, and that has been marked as an exhibit.
It's already in.
It's in the file.
Correct.
It's not before the board has an exhibit.
That's correct.
If you want to do it that way, fine with that. But just so you know, anytime you ever go to court on one of these things, they don't look to see what's in the file, they look to see what has gone in before the board has been sent.
But it sounds as though neither one is.
It is pretty common, I would say.
But what's correct?
No, I understand.
Because the picture that I'm seeing here does not look like this.
We will, we will update our plan to show the actual field location of the underground conduit, but it is very common on design plans, at any early stage, you don't know where PSCNG is going to actually install the underground conduit.
But it, but it's already in. What my point is, is that it's already there, and this is wrong.
It's on.
That's my problem.
It is on Lot 3, and what matters is, when we do the description for the easement, we will get a description, the engineer provides a description, and then we'll update the plan. That gets attached to an easement, which we can work out as council. That then gets followed, it's across. All right?
And as far as the resolution will say, is that they must verify and confirm that it's within Lot 3, because if it's not, this whole meeting is void, and they have to come back before us, because we didn't have jurisdiction to hear it.
Right, but can, can I ask if that, it's, it's supposed to be in Lot 3. Right now, yes, it is in Lot 3, but it is not where it says it is. Is that relevant? I would think it is.
Well, I think the testimony is the fact that it is underground.
Okay.
That's, that's probably what's relevant, although if the board has any questions about how this might interfere with future development of the property, whether it be for a parking lot, or for, you know, multi-family building, or commercial building, that is a fair question if someone wants to ask that.
Okay.
May I make a suggestion? Why don't we consolidate lots 9, 10, and 3, and solve that problem?
Well, they're two different entities, and there's no reason to consolidate.
That's what makes that.
This ultimately may be a separate development lot, all right? So you can't, it is not even feasible to consolidate these lots.
From your standpoint, it is.
Number one, it's, it's not, you have two separate entities that own these separate lots, so number one, you can't have consolidation, just, let me finish, because you have two separate entities. Number two, there's no reason to consolidate because of development lots. Ultimately, these lots, at some point, sometime in the future, are likely going to be developed. How they're going to be developed, we don't know, but at some point in the future, they will be developed, and if you consolidate the lots, then you're impinging and inhibiting the ability to develop what is now, hopefully, going to be an interim parking lot in the near future.
So if you decide at some point in the future that you're going to develop these lots, is that going to interfere with service to?
No, it's going to be an easement, you're going to have the transformer there, we're going to have to develop around. Keep in mind, this diminishes the value of the lot, but you've got to put the transformer somewhere. You need power to the building, and it's not feasible to do it on Bangs Avenue, because they don't have the transmission, sufficient transmission with the utilities on Bangs Avenue, JCPN L. So it has to go somewhere, you need power for the building. This is where it's going to go. Is it ideal for the entity that owns this lot? No, it's not, but we're going to have to work around that at some time in the future, if those lots are going to be developed, but you need power for the building.
Is it normal for a transformer to be installed before it's approved by anyone? That you can? Is that a normal practice from people that have done this before? Because this sounds a little offbeat.
No, 545 Lake, remember, the transformer went in, JCPN L dictated with that transformer.
Right.
They put transformers all over the place. Ordinarily, they don't come before the planning board, but they put transformers all over. This is the first time I've ever had to go before any board, just for a transformer to be installed, but we're here, it's fine. We're here, and we're dealing with the transformer now. But ordinarily, when you have transformers that are installed, JCPN L dictates it, and they get installed.
I mean, they're generally in the right-of-way, not on private property.
That's not true. Go down Lakeview, none of them are in the right-of-way.
Well, you said 545, that was Stroud's right-of-way.
Okay, then you can go to 527 Bangs, that's on the right-of-way, that's actually the problem. I mean, 527.
You're right, it's on the right-of-way.
527 Lake, 527 Lake is on private property, it is not the right-of-way. That's where JCPN L installed.
So can you talk a little bit more, again, you know, we received the correspondence between Sacramento Enterprises and JCPN L, but it seemed a little, a little one-sided. Is there, is there insufficient capacity in Bangs Avenue? And who, or is there anyone who can actually speak to that?
Before we have anyone else come up, is there any other questions for Mr. Melee, because we might have to open a public?
One or two quick ones. I think this was already addressed, I just wanted to confirm, nothing is proposed in the city right-of-way?
Correct.
And there was a comment in our letter regarding, it sounds like the plan will have to be updated to show the proper location, so that an easement can be accurately shown. Also, can a paving repair detail be shown on the plan? I understand there's some trenching that's already occurred, but I wanted to ensure that it gets repaired properly to being a parking lot as it was.
Yeah, no question.
We can, we can put that into the requirements. Any, any other questions from the board members?
Yeah, I just have one other question. How did this all occur? The original approval was for a vote on Bangs Avenue.
No, it said assumed location was on Bangs Avenue.
Okay, and that is what was agreed upon?
It wasn't agreed upon, that was JCPN L.
Well, you're playing semantics.
We're not playing semantics. We didn't agree upon, the intent was to have it on Bangs Avenue. It wasn't agreement, okay, we're going to put it there, we don't dictate that, JCPN L. They don't have, and I'm going to bring up Mr. Bottick, they don't have the capacity to be able to do it at that location. Lines then go in, or insufficient for the building.
The indication was on, approved, the approval that you got, the transformer was going to be on, under the sidewalk, Bangs Avenue.
In the right.
Okay. Whatever the reason was for JCPN L not being able to accommodate there, they decided where it was going to go? How could they decide where it was going to go on somebody else's property?
We worked with them, they, okay. We had a come up with idea where we can put it to get power to the building, since related entities to my client own the properties in the back.
Ah, I thought you just told me that they didn't.
I said, please.
Lot 3, can I, let me, let me.
They are separate legal entities.
Yes.
In the law, when you have separate legal entities that own the building, all right, are they related? Yes, under an umbrella, you have some people that have common ownership. By law, they're a separate legal entity. Because of that, my client was able to get the transformer and find the location for it on that site on the back of the property, on Summerfield Avenue. Is it ideal for my client? No, it's taking up room on another site, but we need power to the building.
That's not my question. My question was, how come you never came back to the board? Said JCPN L let us put it where we had proposed it, and now we're proposing it on a different lot, via somebody else. That's what we're here for. No, we're here because it's already there.
We had it, we had to get power to the building. I put this in, and I made this request months ago, more than a couple months ago. It takes forever to get before this board. I'll be completely honest with you. Trying to get before this board to get applications heard is an absolute nightmare. Trying to get an actual date and get things before the board, this was going back, God knows how many times, you got to get this, all right, we get it, no, we don't want that, we want something different. No, you got to split that out of the plan. This has been going on for, I can't tell you how long, all right? Before the transformer was there, I started trying to get this before the board. So, you know, nothing personal, we're not at fault for this thing taking so long to get before the board. Every application I try to get before this board takes forever, forever, all right? We were timely in trying to get this thing heard, all right? Submitting plans, I'm submitting all different things, taking out, take this out of the plan, put this into the plan, this is what goes on, all right? Not my fault it took this long, all right? We tried to get before this board for a long, long time. We are here now. You need power to a building. We're entering winter, we got to get power to there. It's essential. You build a building, it has to have electricity. We had to put it somewhere. Again, it's not ideal, it diminishes the value of the site that it is on. Again, it's not ideal, it diminishes the value of the site that it is on. We'd rather it wasn't there. But we had no choice, it had to go somewhere and needed power into the building. That's why we are where we are. And I apologize for being so, I'm not going to say it, you know. It's what I deal with trying to get applications heard.
Any other questions from board members? Any preferences from board members as to whether we wait and provide a date and for the, to conceal the transformers or to shield them? Or is it okay that you guys are okay with us waiting until there's a reply from city council and give a date in March? That we have, I think that whatever the next date we have, which is like the first week of March or something like that. Any preferences?
You want to add trees right in front now, whatever you want to put in there.
My concern is, after thinking about it a little bit, is also that if you're going to be doing something to that lot, the chances are that something's going to get damaged. You know, there's something going to happen to that lot that you're going to make it a parking lot or whatever you're going to do to it. If we put something to shield it right now, I hate to waste landscape. I hate to waste.
I agree.
So let's, if everybody's okay with it, I would like to propose that we go with what Mr. Beekman suggested and we do it with a firm date that we have, no matter which way it goes with the council.
For the plan?
Yeah.
Right.
Are there any other questions from the professionals? Any, open up the questions to the public? Any questions from the public on this testimony? Okay, Donna Dewey still would like to get a response on, for that one question you have?
That's for you guys.
I personally don't understand the question, so I don't know if I really want to know.
Well, Mr. Caris stipulated as part of his explanation was that they have no choice, it has to be there.
Oh, yeah.
That JCP&L, so, you know, I don't know that there's anybody here, you know, maybe only JCP&L can answer my question.
Well, let me, see, I'm going to turn it, I can't provide testimony. Let me have my client come up there so we actually get her a breath.
Don't sit yet, just. Do you swear from the testimony? Do you swear from that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, state your name, please.
First name is Greg.
Last name is Vada, Beleg and Victor.
Oh, T's and Thomas, T's and Thomas.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Bottick, what's your relationship to the applicant at 527 Bangs Ave?
I see you're project manager for second.
And you're familiar with the project that's going up to 527 Bangs?
Yes.
In terms of the transformer, you're familiar with the transformer and trying to get power to the building, am I correct?
Yeah.
Let's explain it.
Um, as you had stated, we, there was a assumed underground. Oh, sorry. Not to repeat what was already said, but there was an assumed underground transformer location. After having JCP&L confirm what the existing transformer from the building contained, it was determined that there was not enough transformer capacity to feed 527 Bangs in conjunction with the other buildings surrounding the area that it was feeding. And they had, at that point, determined that a dedicated transformer was required to feed the building.
So does that transformer still exist and serve other buildings today?
Yes. Yes, it does.
So the issue was, did it have the capacity to also serve 527 Bangs?
In addition to the other ones that it currently feeds as well, yes.
So the vault is in fact there?
Yes.
With a transformer?
With a transformer.
Yeah, yeah, transformer. Sorry.
So there can't be another vault with another transformer?
There aren't any lines there.
Yeah, there's no primary. There's no, correct, there's no primaries on Bangs Ave that would have been able to accommodate an additional, another vault, let's say, next to the one we're already there.
Right.
Correct.
We're coming from either direction or?
Correct, yes.
Or on Emery?
Yes. We acquired about, there was a transformer behind Pascal's Beans, but that was not, is that Pascal's Bean? Right there?
Yeah.
But that was not able to accommodate it. What's that?
On their property.
Yes, on their property, correct, so, yep.
Okay.
Does that conclude your testimony? Any questions from the, from planning board based on this testimony? Any questions from our professionals for this, based on this testimony? Anything? Okay. Any questions from the public based on this testimony? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Excellent.
Okay, any comments from planning board members regarding this request? Any comments? Any comments from our professionals that you'd like to make? All right, I'd like to open up public comment. I need a.
Motion?
Motion?
Motion.
Anybody comment? Nope, no public? All right, let's close, motion to close comment, public comment.
Move to close.
Second.
Okay. All right. So can we get a date for them to come back for just the March 4th, 2024? So either way, no matter what happens with the council, that you'll come back for that? Are there any other, was there something else, Doug, that you wanted to make sure that was included?
There was a couple of things, you and Jeff, I think you had them already, the easement, the pavement repair detail, and plan update to show the correct location of the underground transmission line.
Okay.
And that plan update just, it must verify that the service line is in fact within lot three.
Right, and it's also that we get updated plans for the easement to be accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else that we need to add to this? Are you okay, Mr. Beekman?
I'm fine, you want me to review a few things?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so as Doug just indicated, any approval would be subject to an easement between lot three and lot nine and 10. In lot 3101, that will be drafted and subject to approval by the board attorney and engineer. There'll be a screening application made or provided in advance of a hearing on March 4, 2024, unless the applicant is coming back for additional development on that property, which might include a parking lot. The applicant has indicated that there is nothing proposed in the city's right of way on either Bangs or Summerfield. The applicant has agreed to provide a pavement repair detail to be shown on the final plan, subject to the approval of the engineer. The applicant, I'm sorry. And that's it. That's all I have.
All right, can I get a motion to approve this application with the mentioned requirements?
Move it.
Second. John?
Mayor and Yvonne.
Solid for screen.
James Bonanno?
Can I help you vote in this because I was a part of the original plan?
It's a fresh application. Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Galco?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, if I can have two minutes before we get to the next.
Because we're going to Monroe now. Should anybody be like getting stuff together and getting ready? Because, well, I'm not seeing anybody here putting anything together. I'm not sure what we're waiting for, but we're waiting for something and I see nothing happening.
They're all conferencing.
I could have been done all those weeks that we were waiting for a meeting.
Yeah, okay, thank you. He's still talking. And that's just like.
Which one?
I can get the delphons here, the summer.
Yeah, this is, it's a.
Are we ready? Are we ready to get going? We ready?
We're ready.
We ready, Mr. Caris?
Okay, Andrew Caris again, on behalf of the applicant, Monroe Avenue Realty LLC, we're here continuing with the application for 700 million dollar ad block, two, five, three lots, one, two, five. As the board has where we've been before this board a number of times on this application, we have further revisions based upon comments from the board last year on all the plans in the matter. I have Joe Bag up as my witness, so if we can have this sworn in again on this application.
And I think you have been sworn in in the past, but you swear from that the testimony you provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I did.
And our experts have also, our core professionals, rather, have also already been sworn in.
Okay, let's go.
Joe, you're familiar with this application, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And since the last hearing that we had on this map, you have provided updated plans that are here up on the board and have been submitted to the board's office, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, so what I'm going to do, I'm going to mark these, and I think the last marking I had is A17, so this would be A18 for identification. I'm going to mark the Atlantic plan as A18. Today's date is 12/3. And we had a last revision date, am I correct, on 11/3/2024?
That's correct.
Taking a look at what's marked as A18. Why don't we go through revisions that we made to these plans?
So, yes, at the October meeting, I did give extensive testimony on the overall site plan layout and such. And generally, the plan is, you would almost not detect any of the changes in terms of the building layout and such. But you could see, if you were to flip, just general overview of the layout. If you were to flip to the third plan, the site plan, you will see a little bit of an offset dimension. If you were to compare the new plan to the old plan, you really can't detect it by eye, but it is dimensioned along both frontages. We set the building back three inches from both Monroe and Main Street. You can see a dimension on one of the corners here, along the edge, the .25. We removed, as was suggested at the last meeting, we removed the planter beds that were situated along Monroe Avenue. We had planter beds up against the building. Now we accommodate a wider sidewalk, so it's essentially sidewalk from the curb to the building. We indicate, although we testified that it was something that is on the architectural plan but not shown on the engineering plan, along this back building wall where the parking garage is situated on the lowest floor level, we described basically like a half wall that extends up and the remainder of that wall is open, but there would be fencing there, like chain link fencing for security purposes. So we show that the X's represent that kind of fencing that's sitting on top of the wall. You'll see it much clearer with the renderings that are presented later. It's more of an architectural feature than engineering. I just figured I'd bring it up as a change. The internal layout on this floor plan is tweaked a little bit. You could see on, if you were to compare again the old plan versus the new plan, putting them side by side, you would see the parking spaces that are fronting along Monroe Avenue inside the building. We have 12 parking spaces there. Previously, there were 13. And the reason for that is we shifted where we had the, this is architectural again. Where the utility room is, was a utility slash trash room. And now we split the utility and trash room. And what's happening on the northeast corner of the building is purely utility room, and then we have a separate trash room along here. What that did to the parking is it shifted one of the parking spaces from this frontage, as I'm pointing along the Monroe side of the building, to the east side where we had five parking spaces, now we have six. So we shifted a parking space from one side to the other. Essentially, the layout is very identical. The lighting fixtures inside the parking garage, it was a comment from either the engineer or planner or maybe both, stating that it was important to show more lighting extending to the property lines and such, and a comment that the lighting might be a little bit on the high side. So let me just zoom out here. I'll shift over to the sheet eight. If you were to compare the lighting plans side by side, you'd see a lot less ceiling-mounted fixtures inside the parking garage. And that's for us to be very sensitive to light spillage at the property line. So you see the number of lights on the prior plan. In the ceiling, there were 16 lights and now we have 11. And you can see the light values at the property line are essentially zero. Point one foot candle is, I think moonlight is higher than point one foot candle, so it's very low at the property line. Another comment that came up from the last meeting in October was the plantings to put some ground. Another comment that came up from the last meeting in October was the plantings to put some ground cover along the back end of the building. So I'll shift over to sheet 10. So you can see, we still have the street trees along Monroe, that hasn't changed. But the species of tree, street trees, based on your recommendation, were changed to, I forget the name that was specified.
Hackberry.
Hackberry, yes, the hackberries. So whatever street tree the city prefers, we're obviously gonna put that there. But the main comment was in the back area of the building wrapped around, basically, we had essentially rocks or mulch. It was either stone, riverstone or mulch in those areas. And the suggestion was to go with Pennsylvania sedge, so we went ahead and made that change wrapped around.
And there's a comment to mix it up, not just have Pennsylvania sedge, we have no objection to that, correct?
Not at all.
Can I just make a quick comment on that? Cause I know that was, I know I was the one talking about carrots the whole time, and then I saw the comment in the report from, this is the only time you'll probably ever hear me say, that is the one species I have no issue with there being a monoculture, because it does, in its own habitat, that's how it, like having, it'd be so much more simple for them just to have the one. And it does all the ecological things it needs to do. I mean, I have no issue with adding different carrot, but it's gonna be simpler for them, I think, to just, it's like a lawn, it looks like it's a more ecologically friendly lawn.
We're good.
We'll go with either recommendation.
I just think it's simpler because it's that they kinda acts as a lawn, that way they mow it twice a year and it's done.
So the suggestion is to leave it as one species?
That's my opinion, though.
That's okay.
Are you okay with that, or?
And lastly, one of the comments was with respect to the stormwater management. And you heard me testify at the last meeting quite a bit about the green roof, the intensive versus extensive. And here, we're providing an intensive green roof. And one of the comments that came back was the plantings, and I'm not a landscape architect, we do have a landscape architect here. And this same landscape architect helped us and guided us in preparing this new green roof plan and presenting or specifying the species that would be reasonable to provide for an intensive green roof. So we still have an intensive green roof, which is the, I get how to describe it, it's basically the heavier gauge of the different types of green roofs that you, intensive versus green, as intensive versus extensive. But we provide different species based on the recommendations of our landscape architect. And we also ran stormwater management calculations, and although this is not a major development, this is a minor development. So stormwater attenuation is not required, but we did provide a report that shows that the pre to post, meaning the site after it's developed will actually, based on calculations, have less stormwater runoff into the streets than what's existing there today. So that's good news as well for the stormwater.
And those are basically the extent of the revisions that were made to the plans engineering wise, am I correct?
That's correct.
What I wanna do is, we have a few reports I came in with from insight and from CCH. And I believe we are on B6. B6. So I'm gonna mark the insight report, the six for identification, today's date called 3/2023. 12/18.
Play notes, it's my brother's birthday tonight.
And then B7 is gonna be the CCH report, today's date called 4/2023, just reports on the clean shit. The insight report is dated November 17, 2023, B6 and B7. The CCH report is dated November 28, updated November 28, 2024. All right, going to the insight report, first, I just wanna go through a few things in here. It mentions on the first page about the five EV charging stations, there's a comment on CCH report about six, as required, we're fine doing the six. So we will do six EV charging stations.
They'll be constructed in staging phases according to the statute?
I think we're gonna do it all upfront.
You're gonna do it all at once?
We're gonna do it all upfront. It's only six, so we might as well. Number five, I think you wanna flip to. Where, I didn't mention the phasing plan, that is, it's not anything relevant to the development, but it's more of a construction operations type plan. We did present an exhibit at the last meeting in October, that was a logistics construction phasing type plan. We baked that into the plan set this time around, so it's part of the set, and that, that you, you will see if I had to, if I didn't go to sleep here. Might need you a week. So that's part of the plan set now, but the, in terms of what's shown on it, it's very similar to the exhibit that we presented to and discussed at the last meeting.
Are you okay with that, Doug?
Yes, and forgive me because I believe Jason did the last meeting, but reviewing his notes from the meeting, there was an agreement to accommodate
Correct.
schoolchildren. So on the sidewalk there, so I just wanna make sure that was still.
Yes.
Right, and then flipping, I guess, to the next page, number nine, the two parking spaces. Regarding, this is basically regarding the variance for parking, obviously, this is a redevelopment plan, two blocks away from the train station, and we went through those proofs already.
Well, as a planned testimony, in addition to that also.
We could flip over to page four of 10, lighting revisions, we talked about. Number 16, treatment works approval, yeah, we're gonna have to go through other entitlements, other permits on this application, including DOT and DEP in terms of a TWI. 23 was a stormwater management discussion.
Can we talk about 15?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There was just a comment that I think the light fixtures were proposed in the city right away, so.
It's minimal, whatever it is.
Well, you're talking about like a franchise agreement, or something of that nature being.
Yeah. Anything that's in there is subject to an agreement with the city.
Okay, so I'll do that.
Yes, yes. We went to 23, which is the stormwater management comments, and one of the, one of the sub comments in that comment is with respect to DOT being involved for any type of utility connection in the state highway, that's obviously something we would have to proceed with.
Okay, in terms of agreeing group, we'll provide additional testimony.
If necessary.
Just to confirm, so the stormwater report, pre, post development rates will not exceed pre development rates at any point in time?
That's correct, we ran calculations for the 210 and 100, and the percent reductions, 12% for the two-year reduction, 15% for the 10-year, and 37% for the 100-year. These are reductions that will occur if you compare the runoff of the existing site to the theoretical proposed site.
Okay, and then, yeah, the comment you made regarding the intensive versus extensive. Some of the material depths of the planting suggests that it's an extensive system, just by, the DEP has certain guidelines in terms of what's extensive versus intensive. And based on the material depth of less than six inches, it suggests an extensive system. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, that the board's aware of all of that. You know, if certain plantings can only be proposed in, whether it's an intensive system or extensive system, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page here, that the plants can survive with, you know.
Absolutely.
A limited amount of planted depth, and that was.
That was a comment at the last meeting, and our office put together plans that showed the extent of the green roof. Now, we prepared plant, Bowler actually prepared plans, and our landscape architect for the project got involved, and they specified different species. I'm assuming that those are adequate now for an intensive green roof, because they put that together.
So which plan is going to control?
The Bowler, as far as the green roof, the vegetation that's specified is the Bowler plan. Or, it should be consistent with respect to the areas, those all should be the same.
No.
And we'll have testimony from Bowler.
And still, also, no objections to five of the OMM with the roof and property?
We testified to the turning movements, I described the one change in a parking space from the one strip of parking to the other side. That doesn't change the maneuvering of the vehicles within the parking area. 25 has to do with the planter strip in the front that I already mentioned. 28 is the phasing plan that I already mentioned is in part, is in the set. 29 is the sewer connection.
26?
Yeah, consolidated lots, yes, we agreed.
You might have already covered some of these.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's okay. 31, with respect to monitor wells, those will remain, and they will have access to those monitor wells underneath the building.
In the garage.
In the garage.
Additional considerations on page seven, we went through the lighting levels already, you can put on a testimony, am I correct?
Yes, and C is the green roof, the tree, the planting mix on the green roof, we talked about as well.
And the ADA parking stalls are compliant, am I correct?
Yes.
Good with comments? Yes? I think that covers pretty much, even in the CCH report, I don't think there's any additional engineering issues that we need to cover, I think so.
The one comment with respect to EV spaces was in CCH, but we covered that already, and the screening, so we talked about those things.
So how many parking spaces are there versus how many are required?
32 required, 26 are being proposed. 32 after the.
I think it's 36.
So 32 are required?
Yes.
Plus ADA, so that's 34?
That's with ADA.
That's within it? All right, so we're short six spaces. Did we, and I don't know if you're gonna have someone else have this discussion, but from what I recall, that there was an issue with windowless bed bedrooms?
It's been resolved.
That's resolved?
We'll have our architect testify.
That's somebody else we speak to.
But that's been resolved, there are windows in the bedrooms.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a big concern of what I recall.
Right.
So that all the units were being resolved.
And the setbacks, will somebody else talk about the setbacks?
Well, Mr. Mealy noted that the footprint is the same, except for where they adjusted along Monroe and Main.
Right, that two inches or something like that, or three inches? But effectively, the. The lock coverage is pretty much, so this lock coverage, it used to be, what, it used to be 100%? It's still pretty much 100%?
93 or something.
Point three.
Yeah, the impervious, the masses at 90% were at 93.4. And the lock coverage is masses of 90% were at 92.4. I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
On the south side of the property, you indicated a chain link fence, correct?
Integrated into the wall, correct.
Integrated into the wall?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not gonna be offset from the building?
No, it's, I understand it's integrated into the wall, you'll see better renderings of that and a diagram from the architect. But my understanding is, it's sort of like a stem wall that comes out of it, where the parking lot, parking garage ends, there's a stem wall, maybe it's three feet high. And then from there, a chain link fencing in the building, incorporated into the building.
And we'll provide testimony. I'm sorry? We'll have testimony on that. Okay, and what's the setback? That's on the southwest leg of that building?
It's all along the south side, as the building meanders, it's all along that edge.
All right. Why should you indicate that on the plan board? And it just, it just, is on that to cover the openings in the garage? Or is it higher than that?
It's covering the opening.
Okay, and what's the setback from the property line to that stem wall? Why should it go both on the long portion and also on the portion that shuts out work?
Yeah, so you could see.
It's also on the east side, isn't it?
Yeah, it's also on the east side, that's open as well. So even on the east, you could see this, the setback.
Primarily over on the west, that west projection, southwest.
Southwest, yeah, that's zero, so that, that's right on the property line, yes.
Okay.
And then you have the 5.67, which is five foot, seven inches, actually, eight inches, five foot eight inches along this edge right here. Five and a half feet along the south side, and then you have 5.2 feet at the ground level along this side of the building, or east side.
Donna, is that, excuse me, is that setback acceptable? But my concern is that you're gonna have a five foot area back there, it's planted, but will the plantings be sufficient? Will they die because of lack of sun, will they, is that just a place where we're gonna collect garbage?
No, 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 that was a concern at the last, last meeting, where we had made the recommendation to do plantings instead of another type of ground cover. So that, that some of these sedge actually will adapt back there pretty nicely.
It's a low maintenance type of vegetation, my understanding.
I just don't want that to become a area where.
Well, that's, you know, that's a maintenance issue, regardless of what we do in design, they still have to maintain it.
Any other questions from the planning board members on this testimony? Any questions from our professionals? Nope. Any questions from the public for this testimony? No? Okay.
Do you have a question?
I do.
Before you sit down.
Sorry.
That's where you went. I swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did.
And if you could state your name for the record and spell your last, please.
Sure.
Michael Dwyer, D W Y E R.
Thank you.
Mike, can you please give the board the benefit of your qualification?
Sure, I'm a licensed landscape architect, have been since 2015. Right now, I'm a project manager at Bowler Engineering. I've been practicing for over 17 years, and I've testified before this board and other jurisdictions in the state of New Jersey.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sure that's.
Well, is everything is current?
Everything is current?
Everything is current.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Mike, I'm gonna have you take a look at what, or you set up on the board here, let's take a look at the boards. Just do this, sorry. Can you put that in the regent? Tactical options.
So is extra parts.
Oh, yeah, this is gonna be.
Yes, this, this plan is titled Green Roof Plan, sheet L01, and it's dated November 6, 2023.
Okay, and you're familiar with this plan?
Yes.
So you don't work on this plan?
Yep.
All right, why don't you go through what it is that we're looking at on this plan which you provided?
Sure. So through, through all the hatched areas, kind of like the weaving patterns, that represents different types of plant material that is proper for green roof installation. There's, it's indicated six inches of soil, which fits the definition of intensive green roof that will allow for a certain stormwater retainage. Basically, the function of this shallow root depth is that the roots will form a network to be able to retain, along with the soil, retain water and so forth, and thrive as they are native and adaptive species, again, suitable for this type of climate. What you see here on the plan is the majority of it is at the roof level, and then we also have the smaller mezzanines that are above the, or adjacent to the outdoor terraces as they are highlighted in the dark black dashed areas. So this would be the pop-ups on top of the building. Those are also have a green roof on them, so.
So for the most part, that green roof is going to be nearly the entire roof of this building?
Correct.
Okay.
I have one quick question, so I think maybe part of the confusion, when it's, so the green roof tray system, I mean, I see all the plants that are, as they are, so those are the sections like with the crosshatch that are, that says green roof tray, and are the, and those are going to have the sedum? Or is that going to have more than the sedum?
That will have more than the sedum.
Other than the swaths are, and basically you're calling everything on, everything that we see is green roof, like everything planted?
Correct.
But then there's a section that'll just be trays, and then modules, and then another section that won't be modules?
So the, the smaller areas that are on top each of these mezzanines, those will be trays because of the access to them and installation of those once the building is constructed?
I see, so the, where it says green roof tray system tip, that's, that whole section will be a tray system?
Just for the, each of these small areas?
Right, but regardless of the hatch, so I think that's part of what was confusing me at one point because the, you know, you have like 207 Asclepius, and then next to, that's one hatch, and then it shows green roof tray system, but the, it'll all be in a tray system up there.
On top of that, yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah, well, we would work with the, the manufacturer will work with the plan in order to still be able to lay out the plants this way, even though it's in a tray system. So, I mean, it might look, you know, a nice sweeping curve here, but it'll be a little bit pixelated when they go to, to plant it because it's one by one trays.
I understand.
Does that make sense?
And I think the six inch thing, I think that's only the, why there was maybe confusion there too, because the, you know, it shows five, right, of soil, 5.02.
Yeah, we can make sure that that says six.
I don't, I think it's only if the DEP, because the six inch, I know that that is the threshold, I don't, doesn't, I mean, I've done green roofs with six inch that has all these species that have been fine, but it's like, sometimes they call it semi-intensive, whatever, unless it matters from the DEP perspective.
No, I think basically the six inch threshold can qualify for both extensive and intensive, and it seems as though six inch is the minimum required for intensive, so I think it's okay.
Agreed.
So who's going to make that call? DEP?
No, the DEP does not have jurisdiction here for stormwater.
As a best management practice, let's say the BMPs through DEP at six inch minimum. So, I mean, we can make sure it says that on the plans, and that way we're aligned.
I always, it's at 5.02, so.
That's all I have.
So, yeah, just, so what I could ask before about which plan is controlling, so in, in your plan, you have basically a cutout for that little walking path in the south part of the building, and Mid-Atlantic's plan kind of washes over that path, so just need to make sure, or whoever's, you know, controlling, that both, both plans are going to be in sync.
Am I correct, there is, that path that's indicated on your plan is what's going to be developed on this site, am I correct?
Correct, yes, we're working closely with that.
So you guys are going to do the layout and the plantings and?
And we'll make sure it gets incorporated and.
Correlated to the, to the line.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions from either board members or professionals regarding this testimony? No? Any questions from the public regarding this testimony? Okay?
Thank you.
Oh, we don't sit down?
Yes.
Huh? Because he's already standing up. You've already been placed under oath, so you understand that's the testimony you're going to provide this evening, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, and state your name again for the record.
Obi Agudosi. OBI, last name is Agudosi.
Thank you.
Kobe, you're familiar with this application as you provide a testimony on different variations of plans before this board relative to this application, am I correct?
Yes.
We're back here tonight continuing some additional revisions of plans, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, what we have up on the board is most recent iteration of the plans for this site, am I correct?
Yes.
And what I'm going to do is mark this as A20 for identification, the today's date, which is the 4th, and can you give me the last revision date of these plans?
Let me see, this.
11-3, 2023?
Yep.
Taking a look at what's been marked as A20 for identification, why don't we go through the revisions that you have made to these plans?
Thank you very much. So basically, as was testified by the civil engineer, we made a couple of changes to the plan. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, as was testified by the civil engineer, we made a couple of changes to the plan, which is what you have with you, basically dealing with the trash room, you know, so, and the utility room. When you look at the next plan, we, there's a storage basement area that was added, I think it was there before, which we also saw as the, for the commercial space, but on the first floor.
I jump back to that, you have on that basement, you reflect in there, a trash room, am I correct?
Yes.
And that is for the commercial tenants, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, go on.
On the first floor, we modified it to move, before we used to have utility and, you know, trash room in this corner of the building, but upon further deliberation with the team, we decided to split it whereby we just have this area as utility room, and then it was, as testified by the civil engineer, we used one of the parking spots, we relocated it so that we can have the trash room right in this corner here, next to the lobby area. And from talking to the developer, the plan is that on each of the floors, oh, one other thing that changed on this plan, we used to have the stair on this side, and we kind of flipped the stair and the, and the trash room. So when you go on the upper level, which is on this, on this level here, the stair used to be in this area, and this trash used to be on the other side of it, so we kind of flipped it. So now, each of the floors, we have a trash room, which we are showing here, I can zoom in if you want me to. So the idea is that everybody on this level can put their, we provide, we are going to provide receptacles here, and then the building maintenance can pick everything up, take it downstairs in this level here, and store it for when, and then take it out. So unlike before where we had the chute and the compactor with the developer, based on what was being done on that building, decided to change that strategy. So that's really, you know.
Now, the utility room, are all the meters going to go into that room?
Yes.
Including the commercial tenants?
Yes.
Okay, so that's where all the meters are going, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, and in terms of the trash, your understanding is that the trash that is then handled for the tenants will be taken out to the street by the super, and then the commercial tenants will be dealing with their own trash, am I correct?
Yes.
Please go on.
That's basically, we changed this.
What about the layout to the units? We already went through the unit layout, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, and I just want to go through and show, there's a question that came up at bedrooms and the windows, and I just want to show that on the plan, where the bedrooms are and where the windows are for those bedrooms.
Yeah, one of the major changes that was done to last iteration was to provide a corridor in the middle and then have units on both sides. As part of that effort, the number of units was also reduced, I think we used to have 60s to some, now it's 50 something.
We got 52.
52 units, so yes, so everything got reduced from that. So that's what we have now. So each of the units, they all have windows, and that's what we have.
There are Juliet balconies on these units, am I correct?
Yes, on some of them, yes.
Are they extending it to the right away, or, the building was moved back three inches, am I correct?
Yes.
That then pulled back the Juliet balconies, am I correct?
Yes.
Is there any part of those Juliet balconies that are extending into the right of way?
No.
All right, is there any balconies that are extending into the right of way at any point on this building?
No.
Okay. All right, I think what I'm going to do is just take a quick look, most of the comments that we have on both reports having to do with the building or the exterior, and these are going to be dealt with by Mr. Businelli, who previously testified. As far as the internal layout, I think we've pretty much covered everything. Is there anything else?
Just a quick question, just, no balconies are extending to the right of way, so does that mean the only thing that's extending to the right of way is some of the lighting?
The sconces, correct.
Okay.
And regarding trash, you mentioned, so is commercial going to use a private phone?
Yes.
Residential in the city?
Yes.
So, so the laundry room, any of the plumbing vents, where is, how are they, are they going up through the roof, or are they going out to the sides? Do we know yet?
No, we've never dealt with that issue, to be honest, with the application, where the vents are going to go, ordinarily, they go through the roof, but once we get the mechanical plan, I mean, table cover.
Some of the more recent construction, you know, people are observing where they're happening, so it's coming up. But those are individual, like every unit has their own laundry facilities, so it's like AK triangle, you know, so there's a lot of penetrations inside. You guys just have a dedicated laundry room on each floor, it's obviously not nearly as many.
By the way, you did, you had a comment about a bench, I forgot, and we'll add that, no issue with that.
Okay, so each of these utilities, do you have anybody that's going to testify about the affordable units?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions from members of the board?
Yeah, I have another question concerning the, the trash. If I understand what you said, the, all the trash from the floors come down to the first floor where there's a compactor, then the building super will take that and down to the?
Go ahead.
No, there's no compactor.
No compactor?
No.
They're just, just the chute down to the first floor?
There's no chute, we eliminated it before, we, prior presentation had it.
So each, each floor, the super will pick up?
Yes.
Take it to the elevator, take it down to the garage level?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board members? Any other questions from the, our professionals? Good? Okay, any questions from the public? All right.
Thank you.
My completed pile is standing higher.
I'll stand. I'm sorry. I had to be able to see you. You swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could just, again, state your name and spell your last for the record, please.
David Businelli, B-U-S-I-N-E-L-L-I.
All right, Dave, you've been before this board on previous occasions on this application, am I correct?
Yes.
We're back with revisions that you made to the plans, am I correct?
Yes.
And you've been qualified to testify before this board previously, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, what we have up on the plan are revised drawings that you prepared for this board, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, what I'm going to do is I'm going to mark these A21, the date is the 4th December, and the last revision date, am I correct, is 11-4, 2023?
That's correct.
What I'm going to have you do is let's go through what you've done to these plans, the changes you've made, the revisions, the five minutes.
Okay, the last set of plans, if you recall at the last hearing, with the, the third material, the first material being copper anodized aluminum, and the, the second material being Trespa Medion in a bluestone color and pattern, we had the third material, which was going to be a Nichiha or equivalent fiber cement panel in a blue color, that has since changed to a white. So same panel type, only now it'll be white. The, that material has horizontal striations, which sets off the vertical massing and striations that are kind of dictated by the pop-ups and the placement of the copper anodized aluminum panels. We've changed, also changed the storefront material to also be aluminum in a copper anodized with a 19-inch-high bulkhead, also in the same color. And we brought materials down to the ground floor at the residential entrance, the copper anodized extending in this section, and the Trespa Medion extending down and wrapping into the recess of the entrance. And in the, we've changed the artwork location, we had previously had it on the south side of the building, instead of having one big proposed artwork, we now have individual artworks placed between the openings to the garage, okay? And on the rear and the sides of the building, on top of the knee wall that is the perimeter of the parking area, we have proposed a metal fence for all intents and purposes with, that are all vertical, with the appropriate spacing to prevent anybody from putting their head through.
And for security purposes?
For security purposes, yes.
Now, when we look at the commercial area of the building, that class?
Yes.
All right.
So same panel type, only now it'll be white. That material has horizontal striations, which sets off the vertical massing and striations that are kind of dictated by the pop-ups and the placement of the copper anodized aluminum panels. We've changed, also changed the storefront material to also be aluminum in a copper anodized with a 19 inch high bulkhead, also in the same color. And we brought the materials down to the ground floor at the residential entrance. The copper anodized extending in this section and the Trespa Medion extending down and wrapping into the recess of the entrance. In the, we've changed the artwork location. We had previously had it on the south side of the building. Instead of having one big proposed artwork, we now have individual artworks placed between the openings to the garage. And on the rear and the sides of the building, on top of the knee wall that is the perimeter of the parking area, we have proposed a metal fence for all intents and purposes with, that are all vertical, with the appropriate spacing to prevent anybody from putting their head.
And it's for security purposes?
For security purposes, yes.
Now, when we look at the commercial area of the building, that glass?
Yes.
All right, is that glass clear glass or?
It's transparent.
All right, we're down on the garage door.
Transparent those.
Sorry, it was mentioned with the chain link fence prior? Is that, we're talking about the same fence?
Same fence, yeah, but we're specifying the vertical fence. Not chain link would not be a great idea.
So this fence, that grid that's there, is that on the building? Or is that somewhere else?
No, it'll be on top of the knee wall that is surrounding.
Okay, so it's on the, essentially the parking area, connected to it.
And let's see, that's pretty much it for the changes. We have the white nichihua on the sides and back of the penthouse pop-ups.
Why don't you reiterate the types of windows that are being?
The types of windows are, for the units, are all operable. There would be a combination of casement and hoppers. So we'll pull them in because they have the smaller units, venting units, and then the vertical units can be casement. There are some two-story high spaces on the upper floor and those upper panes will be fixed because they'll be open. But all the windows that are in livable spaces will be operable.
That are reachable?
That are reachable, correct. And as for the sliding glass doors, sliding glass is more appropriate than an in-swing operable door, given the height and winds. So you could just open it slightly to get plenty of fresh air. But still having the vertical that you would have with an in-swing French door, let's say.
And where are these sliding glass doors?
They are on the balconies. Where the Juliet, where the Juliet balconies are.
So you couldn't have a swinging door that goes out?
Not, we can't have a swinging door that goes out because of that Juliet balcony situation. And that's pretty much it. Signage, we had originally shown signs, 16 square feet each, one for each store in the band above the storefronts. But we can relocate them down right below to be on each store. So there's 16 square feet each, total 32. Okay, and in terms of the address sign, go back to the elevation. We had proposed a silver, sorry, address sign right here that would be recess flush with the copper panels.
What about for the commercial stores? Is there going to be numbers on those?
Once we, yeah, there will be. And we can place those right above each storefront, right above, right above the door, once we know the addresses.
So the one you were just talking about, the address, that's for the residential?
That's correct.
What was the reason for the change to the white? I was just curious. I know you said there's horizontal.
Well, there was commentary from the board about the color. And then we huddled with the client and thought that a white would really pop and give it some, and more life than the blue. And it does work.
Can we, can you talk to me about the finish of the white? What is it?
The materials.
Well, it's a fiber cement panel. It's got a, it's got a smooth finish.
Right.
Okay, so it doesn't have a whole lot of texture.
Is it glossy, is it, is it matte?
It's not, it's, 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 let's call it eggshell. That would be the best description. It's not matte, but it's not glossy.
Okay, my concern is glare.
Yeah.
Because this is facing east.
Yeah.
So.
Well.
The biggest part is facing south.
Right, but I'm looking at the east part because we're seeing east and west is usually where we get the biggest hit.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that this is not going to be glossy like it was on 545.
No, it won't be glossy. And given that concern, we'll make sure that the texture and finish will address the glare.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And can we just go over like on page, on A 100 that you have there? I'm a little confused as to, you have something that says west elevation. And then I see on A 102 that I think I'm looking at the west elevation, but it looks different. Because I see a lot of white on the west elevation.
So that's the north.
What's, which one's north?
What we're looking at.
All right, that's, not that one.
This one?
No, not that one.
This one?
That one. That one, it says that it's west. West is facing.
Main Street.
Main Street.
Right.
So that insinuates that's a different, is that, that's still the same building?
Right, so, yeah, so here, so here is, here's the body of our building.
Right, that's the only chapter, what's behind there?
This is, this is where the building steps back, behind the one-story building, where it elves.
All right, that goes behind the other store, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not on top of, it's the line.
The bottom part there is that one-story building?
Right.
And then you're looking.
You're looking back.
You're looking at the rear portion of the south of the building, in the end.
We also.
To look, to see that. Okay, all right. Gloss and glare.
Got it.
Just telling you because it's.
I understand.
Painful. Gloss and glare.
Why don't we, if it's approved as a condition, we can do it either to neutral or.
It, I have no issue with white.
I would like to say the white shall not be glossy and it shall not produce glare.
Not, exactly, that's all I'm asking. Whatever color it is, it doesn't really even matter what color it is. Not, I mean, besides whatever we approve. But gloss and glare are a big problem with here, obviously, you know that.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I should suggest not a white.
No, whatever.
There you go, just, yeah, the not a white. So that's my, my two cents here is the light, warm gray tone.
Yeah. And this is, and if it stays white, it stays white.
I would think white, whether matte or glossy, will produce glare.
Okay, then we have to have that discussion then.
I think it has to not be white, but not a dark color.
Right, right, right. So.
What do you feel with that?
Not, if it's a really lighter gray, then I think it might work, I think we have to look at.
Well, let me ask you a question. Is that a blue, uncolored, is that a blue or a gray?
It's a bluestone.
Is there any way to do that color really light? So this way you're getting some bluestone and essentially.
I mean, that's a few, I just think it's a, I think it's not white. And it's something that works in your.
I'm looking for a reference in terms of gray.
In that palette, taking that and putting it on.
We, that's what we were trying to do with the blue and go opposite, here we're going to get the color discussion. But I think if we go to an off, off, off-white, if you want to say it, or a very, very light gray, I think you'll avoid. You'll still have the whiteness, but not, you know, it's not going to be, may not be white like the paper.
I agree, a very light gray tone.
I think that would be fine.
Very light gray tone.
And we don't want to make your life difficult. We don't want to drive your costs up.
Right.
No, we can, I think that's achievable, let's say.
What, I do want to go through though on the bluestone and copper, just the nature of the materials. Clear, I know questions came up. All right, so what are the materials for the building?
Well, the materials for them above the ground level and beyond the rear, the, this is here is copper anodized aluminum. You've seen silver anodized, you've seen bronze anodized. This is an oxidation process that produces a copper color. So rather than having natural copper, which either has to be treated to not go green, to patina, or a natural copper, which is really, really expensive and which will go green like the Statue of Liberty, this is a process that'll give the aluminum durability and a color that stays. Rather than having a paint or a coating that could deteriorate over time.
And the bluestone, the nature of that material?
Yeah, that is a, that is a composite laminated product. It's European, it's super durable, it's got texture to it and the colors throughout. So, and it is, it will last, it'll stand the test of time.
And the white area, the touch, is a fiber cement?
It's a fiber cement, yeah.
And what about on top of the roof?
The same thing, the same material mix. The copper anodized aluminum will flow up to the pop-ups and the side walls, the rear wall of the pop-ups will be the fiber cement.
One thing, the HVAC equipment, all right, you've done the exterior, familiar with the surrounds of the building, am I correct? Are they going to be, any of that equipment, is it going to be visible from the street?
No, and I believe the boiler plan and I think the engineering plans have the mini-split units that will supply HVAC for the apartments mounted on the backs of the pop-ups. So visible from the street, you won't see them. And any mechanical units, again, subject to engineering, that will serve the commercial space and the hallways. And any other spaces that need ventilation will be rooftop, roof-mounted and will not be visible, they're not that big. And with a 42 inch high parapet and angles of view from the street on the five-story building, they won't be visible.
Yeah, it was a comment that I forgot to address with the prior test.
There was no comment about percentage of wall, about the percentage of the glazing. I'm just, just to my notes. The Monroe Avenue storefront is about 255 square feet, which represents 11%.
All right. Before I get to the reports, send questions from the board.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The renderings, the height of the building is indicated to be a little over 70 feet?
Yes.
How much, what's the little over?
Well, it says, it says 70 feet.
Is that, okay, because the dotted line on my copy is below the roof.
Right, well, yeah, that's, that's the, that's the top of roof.
Okay.
And I'm glad you brought it up because, I think because of the green roof and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, that is now going to be on the roof of the mezzanine. It's probably going to be the surround of, there'd have to be a short parapet to accommodate the roof. So that, but to the roof level, it's 70 feet.
Okay, and so there's going to be a short parapet?
Yeah, we're going to have to now to accommodate that green roof.
Looking at, again at the rendering, it appears that your first floor level is 14 feet above the grade?
Yes.
Okay, and then that each floor is 11 foot nine?
Yeah.
Is it possible, without messing things up, to shrink those dimensions a bit? What I'm saying, could you put it, get a 12-foot ceiling height for the first floor without detrimental?
Did that, I don't, I don't, well, you're not talking about shrinking the garage height? Are you the first floor?
Well, I'm just asking, I'm asking about each floor height because if you look around that neighborhood, you've got, the biggest building is a four-story building with a parapet. Okay, you've got five foot here. It appears that these floors are pretty generous.
Yeah.
And in order to make the building look a little bit more within the scale of the surrounding areas, is it possible to shrink that floor height without detrimental effects to the building?
I think that the, I think that the proportions are appropriate, but Obi, since it's your floor plan, what do you think?
Yeah, you're redesigning it. When you have the first floor garage, you need the height for that garage.
You need the height for the first floor.
Yeah, you need the height for the first floor, so.
Okay. And then the 11 foot nine is a reasonably standard?
Yeah.
Yeah, because remember you have in-between floors.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so it's really not feasible to redesign.
I was just hoping you'd be able to cut a couple of feet along.
It's not, not going to work.
Any other, other questions before we get to the reports?
I just have a couple of quick questions if I may.
Go ahead.
Do you have an east side rendering?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an east side rendering?
Yeah, it's on the first, first page.
Yeah, we have, let's go through them. That's our, and we have these.
That's west, the opposite side.
We don't have anything looking from east, no, we could get, we could get.
Well, it is actually on the first page.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry.
First page.
No, no, first page.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, right there.
Right there.
Got it.
Top right.
So.
My apologies.
That has the opening on that east side?
Yes.
Is that going to impact with car lights into that neighbor?
Uh, no, because the wall is at three foot high all around the perimeter of the block.
All right, and that's the same all the way around, so.
Yeah, and that's uniform.
And then the last hearing, you testified copper anodized tri-design? Is that?
Dry design, D R I.
D R I, okay, not T R I, sorry. And that was one of the tiles, that's the orange copper?
Yes.
Right? And then you also, the Crespo natural slate was the blue?
No, it's a, it's a bluestone.
Okay, so you didn't have, the last meeting, you didn't have that same?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm referencing the correct color.
Yeah, it's Trespo with a T.
Do you by any chance have a, like a design number or something that we can refer to?
I could get one, yeah, we'll submit.
Okay.
We'll submit that.
Thank you. That was all I had.
Are we saying, now that you've brought it up, that first, that, the east elevation, are we saying that we can see through that? So the cars that are coming through?
It's open.
Can, it doesn't appear open on what I'm looking at, but.
Go to, you should go to a different page.
Is it page one?
Because I mean, you bring up a good point. If that, if that's wide open, even if the cars are at a distance, you're going to see, you're going to see headlights. Like there, all right, so that's, that's east.
So that's the rear, so that's looking south.
That's the back of the building.
But that's the same thing that you're going to have on the east side?
Yeah.
So that's the same thing on the east side?
Is that on the right?
I'm just moving on.
Yeah, the slider.
Yeah, that. So those.
So that fence is next door.
Yes.
Is like kind of straddling where that door, old man door is.
Oh, where the little door is.
So most of that open area is in their backyard, but some of it is in line with their house.
Seems like backyard would be just as big deal.
If there's concern about visibility, you know, into the garage or out.
No, it's out of the garage.
Yeah, we could raise, we could raise that wall. We could raise the height of that wall.
I think that it has, we have to be conscious to that house to make sure that they can't see the lights.
Well, we can raise that wall, we're just going, yeah.
I think that that would be.
I didn't have a concern of the other facades, but that facade.
Yeah, the east is the only one.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Whatever, whatever, it has to be four feet so that they, they can't see it.
Sure.
As long as they can't see the lights.
And you won't.
The headlights.
You'll have 50% ventilated, you'll be able to reach non-mechanical ventilation thresholds.
Good catch.
Yeah, we'll be. Yeah, we'll be okay.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions from our professionals before we go over the reports? Okay, go to the reports.[1670.44]
First thing I'm going to do is look at the inside report, here, in terms of signage, I'm going now to page three, then on the inside report, which is separate documentation. You've already gone through the signage that is being proposed, am I correct?
Yes.
And it's limited signage, it's for the storefront, what you included at the top, you want to drop that down, so preferred by the board, and then the number and the panel to write at the end, am I correct?
That's correct.
I think that's pretty much it for the inside report. All right, looking at, what's going to mark this B7, to the association work, all right, going through this report, we're just going to go right to the comments.
Yeah, I think most of this has been addressed already with direct.
Is there anything to add, do you want to just focus on?
Just checking, we've got the specification for 19 inches on the bulkhead, the windows are all applicable except for the.
That or the microphone?
Oh, sorry, I'm kind of just recapping some of the previous testimony. Are we saying, so are we saying white with a non-glare, or are we still, are we going to change off white?
Very light gray, very light gray.
Light gray, okay.
Non-glare.
And we're going to move the signs for the storefronts, or is there a preference to relocate the signage for the storefronts off that cornerboard onto the storefront, or?
Let me put that.
Let me show the, yeah, right there.
I know we had done on 614 Cutaway, where we did it under, I don't know.
Yeah, it's who, who are you trying to attract, people driving by or people walking by?
Right, we can lower it.
We can bring it down, it's up to the board.
It's up to the board.
Yeah, I mean, I prefer signage at pedestrian height.
I mean, we can bring it right here, we can bring it right here.
I think you're right, pedestrians also, and I think it makes them more attractive for that.
Do you, is there an overhang there?
No.
It's just a flat.
No, the only, only this portion is recessed, and this would be, so we could, we could bring it down here, it's not a, it's not a issue.
Yeah.
I suppose you want me to give yourself a band, a second mullion and a signage band?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, that's second, like I, so it would be transparent, solid transparent, yeah.
So it would just be a larger band between the upper and lower windows?
Uh, yeah, well, instead of just having a thin mullion, we could, we could make it wider, we can enough piece of signage.
And what we'll do, we'll submit that.
Maybe you want to match it to where your signage band on your adjacent building is, so you get that kind of data.
That's maybe one question, okay. I, I think those are, you know, the big open items.
Okay. All right, any other, oh, that's right, you're going to, we're done, correct? Any other questions from the board members? Any other questions from our professionals? No? Any questions from the public? Okay.
Thank you.
One more witness, my client.
You swear from the testimony you're bound to provide with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name for the record?
It's Paul Ricci, R-I-C-C-I.
Paul, can you please give the board the benefit of their qualifications?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, I've been licensed since the year 2000. I'm also a member of the American Institute Certified Planners. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning, which I received from Rutgers University 1997. I'm currently a municipal planning consultant to six towns. I testify regularly in front of boards, I've been qualified in over 200 boards throughout the state. I've, I testified from the zoning board many times, I must have testified at some point in front of the planning board.
I tagged you in answer, I don't know if it's zoning or planning.
Yeah, but in zoning board several times, I know.
Okay, as recently as only two or three years ago, too, on the zoning board?
Yes. I mean, to be full candid, a long time ago, as a young planner, I actually represented the zoning board at one point in time.
Okay.
All right, Paul, what I'd like you to do is go through your planning testimony relative to this application, also I want you to address the affordable, and why don't we address the affordable first?
Okay.
And then we'll get into the planning testimony.
Okay, I, I did review your planning report, and, you know, she made it aware that we weren't complying with what's commonly referred to as the UHAC Regulations Uniform Housing Affordability Control Regulations. I spoke with the applicant, it's their intention to fully comply with those regulations, they are indicated in the planning report. With that said, here, you know, we do have over 20% affordable housing, housing 21.1%, which exceeds the applicant's requirements, so there would be two one-bedroom, low, moderate units, six two-bedroom, three three-bedroom, and out of those, they would be four low, five moderate, and two very low. And, and the intent here is to meet all the regulations, but I think that would be delivered as, in terms of the low, one one-bedroom, two two-bedrooms, one three-bedroom, for the mod, one one-bedroom, three two-bedrooms, one three-bedroom, and for the very low, one two-bedroom and one three-bedroom. But the intent, again, is to adhere to the UHAC regulations per the law.
And we will adhere to the UHAC regulations, am I correct?
Yes.
And again, the, these are all rental units, am I correct?
Yes.
And the units also will be family units, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, there's an issue with regard to the utilities, that in terms of working out with the administrative agent for the project, we work through the utilities and the administrative agent, also the income classification with the administrative agent, am I correct?
That's correct.
And that's what's normally done with these types of units, when we provide affordable units, am I correct?
That's correct, because that's a measure of the affordability of the unit.
Okay. Any questions with regard to the affordable?
I'm sorry, you did that really fast, can you?
I know, I know. But are you looking for the breakdown of the low, mod, and very low? Is that where?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I got the, I got the one two-bedroom and one three-bedroom for the very low, correct?
Yes, mod, one one-bedroom, three two-bedrooms, one three-bedroom. The low, one one-bedroom, two two-bedrooms, and one three-bedroom.
Isn't it the same as what's in the table?
Yes.
It is the same that's in the table right now?
Correct.
It is?
Okay, and do you know how they're going to be distributed? Kind of by floor, or?
Well, I think the intent was to place that on the file plans, correct?
That is correct.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
We'll place it on the file plans. Right now, we haven't determined which units specifically, since we're already doing affordable, require indicate the number of units which we have done and the classification which we have done. But on the file plans, we'll reflect the specific units that will be designated as affordable units. And then we'll work out the administrative agent in terms of the income classification, and then also in terms, as required by section.
So is that something the board is comfortable with, even to post-resolution compliance?
I think so.
You mean the location?
To locate the actual physical location of each one? I don't think that we've ever had determined where they would be.
I mean, this is really our first one.
Actually, no, I mean, we've had others that have like 20% or 40%, we've never kind of said where they have to be.
Yeah, ordinarily, I don't.
Just we have, we have a mix of one-bedroom, two-three.
As long as they're meeting the percentage mix.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they're not all grouped together. I mean, we're, that's what, you wouldn't want them all to be grouped together, is what we're, I mean, we would not want that.
Right, no, we can, we can state that.
I don't think it's a desire to specify where everyone, each one is.
No, 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 just that they're not all either, all on the same floor, or?
And not, not all adjacent.
Or not all.
Yeah, they'll be dispersed around.
Right, that they should be dispersed throughout the floor. So we should put that in our.
Hasn't been determined how this affordable housing units are going to be administered?
Through the administrative agent, the administrative agent.
Okay.
I just have a question, because I'm just confused. On the table in the report where it says exceeds, I know it says you're going to do what's required, but then if those numbers are the same, were they going to change? Because I just got confused, the table here has the asterisk saying exceeds the maximum, but then the numbers were the same.
Yeah, so we still?
Am I, am I misunderstanding the table or the note?
That would be two, six, and three, for total of eleven.
On the, on the, on page.
Two, two one-bedroom, six two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units.
So the table is correct, that's in the report?
That's 18.1%.
It's 18.1% one-bedroom, 54.5% two-bedrooms, and 27.2% three-bedrooms, that meets UHAC.
That's not, those are not the percentages that we have, but?
That's in the report.
Yes, but those are not the percentages. They're, they're point one off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In each one. So I just want to make sure that, because, because I'd like to be able to say that these are the numbers that are in this report, meaning the amount of bedrooms, low, moderate, whatever.
Yeah, under UHAC, you can't have more than 20% on the one-bedroom, you need a minimum of 30.
Well, you just want it to be what it says here.
That's why I'm confused, I get the asterisk.
Out of the four lows?
Yes.
We have one one-bedroom. Out of the five tots, we have one one-bedroom.
Yes.
And then, none of them, there are no very low one-bedrooms.
Correct.
Correct, that's what it shows here. If that's what the law says is allowed, then?
That's entirely consistent.
Just.
I'm just asking about the asterisks, what does that mean?
Yeah, the asterisk says that's unprovided.
Where it says three exceeds the maximum permitted, I don't understand that part.
So, so this is what I'm trying to determine here, so based on Mr. Ricci's testimony, we only have two one-bedrooms.
Correct.
But it says provided. It says three in the, in the.
Yes, three would not be permitted under the law.
It's not permitted, so we're doing two.
So they're modifying which of the one-bedrooms will be, will be affordable, so that there are only two affordable one-bedrooms.
So that provided column will change, am I correct?
So provided is two?
Yeah, because right now in the plans, this is what we've got.
Right.
They haven't shown us a change.
But the testimony is that?
The testimony is that they're only going to give us two one-bedrooms.
Testimony is we can only do max two, because otherwise we won't be complying with UHAC, so we're doing two.
That's why the math is, yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And to make it work, they increased the two-bedroom from four to six, and they've decreased the three-bedroom from four to three.
Six, two, six, three.
Two, six, three, correct.
Right, two, six, three.
That's textbook right there, textbook delivery.
Which is why, you know, it'd be handy to see it in plan view as well, to make sure that, like, okay, so if this one-bedroom is no longer going to be an affordable unit, this two-bedroom is going to be the affordable unit that compensates for that one-bedroom.
Well, it's.
Picture a thousand words.
Ordinarily, we wouldn't do that, but as long as, you know, the testimony is that we're providing affordable, and we have to, for this UHAC.
Right, that we have the right amount, they're not adjacent to each other, they're all on the same floor.
And just so you know, that, I mean, the applicant has agreed to disperse them, I mean, the, the rules encourage it, it's not an absolute requirement under the rules, but the rules encourage it, and the applicant has agreed to do that.
Okay. Anything else from the board or the professionals?
Affordable.
Nope. Okay, anybody from public?
But we're not, that's just, we were going to just get into just planning testimony.
All right, go.
If you'd like me to go, I can.
No, no, let's, let's, let's keep going.
Quickly, right there.
Okay, do I need to restate the deviations and variances that we're requesting?
No.
Okay, I'm going to jump into it. From a planning standpoint, I mean, this is, this is your community, I think we can all recognize that this is a transformative project, one that's been in works for, for many years, and one that takes, you know, a former tire, a tire in a former gas station in vacant properties, and brings those properties into a productive new use that's needed by the citizens of Asbury Park. We all recognize that we're in a significant housing shortfall right now, and there's a great demand for both the affordable housing as well as housing units, not only in Asbury, not only in New Jersey, but throughout the country. So for a planning standpoint, it's a very positive project. Clearly, it addresses your affordable housing as well, and also as part of this application, there is a green roof that addresses stormwater in the building. I, I've been a part of a lot of mixed-use projects, I don't believe I've been a part of a project with a green roof as to that. They're usually very expensive to build, is my understanding, and it's a tremendous, it's a tremendous design, in my opinion, by the applicant. Now, you've heard from the previous witnesses, you know, you have the new streetscapes being redone, the street trees, there's storage for tenants in these buildings on basement and multiple floors, bike storage and the like, so it's a product that was designed and intended to be harmoniously integrated into the neighborhood. I mean, I have pages here of, of how this, this application advances both purposes of your redevelopment plan and purposes of your master plan. I did want to point out that your redevelopment plan was clear, that it gives this board the ability to grant what are typically type C variances, but deviations from the redevelopment plan, and I may just read that language, and it says, "Whenever an application relating to a specific piece of property, the purpose of this plan would be advanced by deviation from the requirements of the plan, and the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh the detriment." So that's on pages 64 and 65 in the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan was clear that it supersedes the local zoning, it replaces it, so all provisions and underlying ordinances are replaced by your redevelopment plan. It established a vision, says the section of Main Street, I'm going to quote, "is a vibrant commercial district that caters primarily to local residents of all races and income levels, but that also draws visitors. New buildings in this section are all constructed up to the sidewalk line and have attractive lively facades. Surface parking lots that once lined the street have been redeveloped so that buildings line the street." I mean, that characterizes this project. Goals and objectives, goes on, "Reinforce a section of the redevelopment area as a commercial district that caters primarily to needs of local residents. Clearly, housing and affordable housing is in need. Pedestrian sidewalk restoration, where surface parking lots have creeped into the pedestrian sidewalk, the pedestrian sidewalk should be restored." That clearly occurs here. Surface parking redevelopment, encourage property owners to redevelop surface parking lots with multi-story buildings containing ground floor retail space. So textbook delivery of the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan. Also, your master plan, continue to encourage new retail, commercial, and mixed-use developments consistent with city redevelopment plans. It's very warm in here, no? Very, am I?
Yes.
Balanced housing options in the city, including affordable housing for low and moderate income households, encourages the continued development of a variety of housing ranging from, and it goes on, affordable market rate and the like. Fully integrate affordable housing throughout the city, both within projects and geographically throughout Asbury Park. Economic objectives. Focus economic activity in the city's major economic centers, especially the redevelopment areas. Recognize the unique character of each area and promote development that will strengthen and reinforce market, reinforce niche markets, support transit-oriented development in the station area, especially underutilized or vacant commercial property. We all recognize this is within a quarter mile of your train station, that's considered the inner ring of a transit-oriented development. Some facts about the sideyard setback, we're seeking a sideyard setback of 3.17 feet, where the redevelopment plan permits between zero and five feet. In this regard, the redevelopment plan doesn't participate buildings touching each other, and it's important to recognize that, that 3.17-foot setback is for a portion of the lot line, approximately 50% of the lot is in compliance, and approximately 50% of the lot is not in compliance. That's resulting of, of building in steps and out steps, which promotes a desirable design objective. Alternatively, there's a potential to have a 90-foot-long facade without any break, so visually, that small indent will be visually appealing as a result of it. I did note that in my review of aerial photography in my site visit, that these conditions were prevalent on both Main Street and Summerfield Avenue, so I didn't believe it would result in a substantial departure from the character of the area as well. Regarding the rear yard setback, that's opposite of Monroe Street, 5.5 feet is proposed, where a minimum of 10 feet is required. That setback adjoins on the, on the adjoining property, a setback of zero feet. Coiningly, that setback would not be inconsistent with the area either. Regarding the lot coverage, and in, with the coverages, the, the applicant is largely compliant, I wouldn't consider it the minimus type of exceedance, but I think your planner was very clear, and I think it's helpful when she pointed this out, that in terms of the lot coverage, 294 square feet is what we're talking about for a project. So when we're balancing the benefits of the detriments of a project, I don't think. So when we're balancing the benefits of the detriments of a project, I don't think we're talking about a substantial departure from your zone plan. And then, as well, I think as a, as a community planner as well, you're always thinking about the likelihood of a project being developed. Sometimes, there's, this is not a planning rationale, but developers do need some help, and particularly when projects going on for long periods of time, their financing is changing and the like. It just helps improve the, the likelihood of, of a project improving, of being developed. Regarding the, the impervious coverage variance, that's 485 additional square feet of impervious coverage, where 93% is proposed, where 90% is permitted. You heard from the landscape architect, while exceeding that impervious coverage, the applicant has a green roof, and I've had different calculations of that green roof, anywhere from 4,400 square feet to as high as close to 7,000 square feet, and how that's, that's designed. So I think the applicant is more than mitigating for that loss of open space through that green roof, and for this reason, it would not result in a substantial departure from your zone plan. Regarding the minimum, minimum open space variance, this is, in my review, this is not from your redevelopment plan, but from your underlying city zoning ordinance that was created in 2021, long after the redevelopment plan was, was created. And it's my understanding that the, the, that the city does not want to have balconies extending out into, into the right-of-ways, and that the applicant could meet this objective through those balconies, and that those balconies are permissible under the redevelopment plan as long as they don't extend into the right-of-way, or as long as they extend into the right-of-way four feet or less. So it's my opinion as a planner, that the board has already determined that it's a better zoning alternative for this track, not to have those balconies, that are something that is permissible under the plan for design objectives, and that, again, the benefits of this project of not having an additional 2,160 square feet of public open space are outweighed by the numerous benefits that I articulated previously. The applicant is also seeking a parking variance, where 26 off-street parking spaces have been provided, where I believe that that's reduced to 32 spaces when we have the EV credit from the 36-space requirement. And the applicant is requesting this largely on the basis of its proximity to mass transit. That's the train space being within a quarter mile, bus service available on, on Main Street. I think as a planner, it's clear that this development is also walkable to the downtown and nearby shops. From a practical matter, in these type of projects, I mean, I, I am, I'm a planner that has, you know, transit-oriented development, redevelopment plans and the like, there's somewhat of a self-regulating factor as well. If you come to a building and the amount of parking that you need is not being provided, you're going to go to another type of, of building. I did look at your demographics, and your demographics today do support this type of development in the city. 25% of all rental households in the city do not have a car today, and 49% have, have one-vehicle car. So you have the existing population in the city today that could take advantage of, of these type of units under this environment as well. In, in terms of the, the negative criteria, these variances and deviations can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good in your zone plan. The mass and height of this project have been already articulated as part of your, your redevelopment criteria and, and are being adhered to. The applicant, in my opinion, has worked diligently with, with the board and its professionals to design a project that can be integrated into this area of the city in a harmonious type of way. Again, I've, I've mentioned this many times, I think it's clear that the benefits of this project, the repurposing, the transformative nature of this project outweigh these deviations that we're, that we're, we're seeking. And there's no, no substantial negative impacts that I've heard throughout this process that aren't being mitigated. In terms of the design exceptions, you heard the previous testimony from the previous witnesses, they have to be reasonable and practical under the facts presented. That testimony has been provided already, and that is the intent of the law under the Garfarlo decision in that regard. Overall, as a planner, I mean, this project results in, in sound land use planning. Again, that's transformative, and one I think that board members can be proud of, that they see built in, in future years.
That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions for the, for our planner? From the board or a professional? Okay. Anything from the public? Okay. Any comments? I'd like to actually open to, where are we? We're finished?
Sure.
Can I get a motion to open to the public comment?
Shall move.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any, anyone in the public that would like to make a comment about this whole application? Okay, motion to close com, public comment?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay. All right. Do you want to have your items, or you want me to go through what I have, or? How would you like to do it?
Want to go through what you have?
Sure. I'm sure that, I'm sure you have more than I do. Let me just say that. I have the, the items that we went through today, about the, the change in color, that it's not a, a no-glare color, that's going to be a very light white in tones. We're going to raise the east, sorry?
Gray, light gray.
Light, very, very light gray. Did I say something?
Is it light white?
No, light, light gray, I'm sorry. Light, very light gray. We're going to raise the east wall to four feet, so that we don't get any headlights into the home that's next door. We had a modification to signage that we suggested. I think that Eric came up with what that was going to be. We want to make sure that the distribution of the affordable housing is what is mentioned in the CCH report on page 22 of 27.
Although it's going to be a safety supply, so that they have to comply.
Yeah, they have to comply, absolutely, absolutely. I know that it wasn't mentioned, but I know that it was implied that we were going to be paying into the parking fund for the, for what's not covered.
I don't know if that's part of the Main Street redevelopment plan. It is for the, whatever, the CBD. But I don't believe there's a statute on that for the ordinance.
All right, we're not going to need a, a ruling on that, because I certainly don't know.
Well, we can say if it's required.
If it's required, then, then the, the spaces that are not...
Any, any development expenses, they would be responsible for. They haven't asked for waivers for any of those anyway, so, but I could, I could take a look and see if that...
Yeah, we'd see if that, that needs to be there.
We can put a generic term.
If required undoubtedly, we pay it, but I don't believe it's part of the Main Street redevelopment.
Okay, I, I wasn't sure. I don't know if anybody else had anything else, and then Jeffrey can go through whatever he has.
Donna apparently is going to have some additional comments.
That's fine.
There's going to be a parapet above the roof level to accommodate a green roof.
On the mezzanine.
On the mezzanine. Oh, yeah, on, just the mezzanine layer. There's already a parapet on the other layer. The parking layout has testified to this evening. 26 spaces, six shall be EV, and they'll be installed before the issuance of any CO. And a variance of 32 required after the EV credit. There, the street trees shall remain on Monroe, they're going to be hacked bury. The open wraparound of the building on the east side, south side, and that partial west side in that L area shall be Pennsylvania Sedge. Stormwater management shall be an intensive green roof, and the plan shall be compatible and shall also address the minimum planting depth for an intensive green roof. The pre and the post runoff shall be improved from what currently exists per the testimony. And the color palette, I think you said, will be as testified to this evening, with the white being altered to light gray, non-glossy, non-glare. Those were the comments I had.
Anybody else have any others that we did not review or include? Now's the time. Okay.
There's a park, 26 or 30? Required. Required, we had is 36 on our plans. That's after the credit. After a reduction of the electric space, 36 spaces are required. It used to be 41. That's what I had.
I'm 37 spaces for quarter on market rating.
37, four.
Plus the two for the, for the...
39, and then minus seven, they, and they'd be, right, well, no, it's 10%. And you round up, it would be 35. You get 10% credit. 10% reduction. So if we need 39, you round up, 69, minus four, that would be 35. Right?
So the variances for 26 were 35 required.
Am I right with that?
You want to say 36, that's just a...
Well, you round up to four. So it's 35.
We're in agreement with that?
If you're sure, you round up on the credit.
Under section eight.
Just want to make sure we have the requirements right. 36 then.
No, it's 35, 39, minus four, it's 35.
So clarification, the parking variance, there is 26 spaces where 35 are required rather than 32.
35 are required. Okay, so it's nine short. Okay.
Oh, one other comment is any, any improvements within the city right-of-way show, that happened to Shell Team.
Oh, absolutely.
Mayor and council.
Mayor and council. Yeah, that should be just the standard that we have in all of those, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, in this, in this situ, is there anything else? In this situation, we have, because of the amount of time that this has gone on, we have a limit as to how many people can vote. And we have five. So, can I get a, and the people are, unless you guys want to do it?
Who is eligible?
I have them if you want them, want them to vote, or if it's up to you.
Yes, I was just going to go to the email list.
Yeah, that's why, I did it on, based on your email.
Correct.
So it's, so it's Mayor Moore, Jim Henry, Mike Gunnin, but he's not here, Yvonne Clayton, Jennifer Souter, and Eric Galipo.
Sort of.
Yeah, could, no, because you were not...
No, just that's not how my last name's spelled.
Oh, my God.
Close enough.
Don't we have five to vote?
We have, we have five to vote.
We're good with five.
We have five to vote. All right? So, can I get a motion to, to approve this application with the recommendations that were just stated?
And the variance rule.
The variance rule. I get a motion from someone that's allowed to vote?
I'll move it.
Mayor Moore?
Second.
Okay. Top, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Jen Souter?
Yes.
Eric Galipo?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have, next up, because the fun continues? Well, we have to do the resolution first.
Can we do the resolution, Mark? Just throw the rest.
All right?
Just throw the rest.
All right, everybody out. Quickly. We've got to go to closing scores.
Do you have?
Yeah. I know, right?
What did I do?
She, she knows, she knows, he knows who to, who to grease. All right, everybody out, please.
I've been where you have been.
Bye. All right, do we, do we need a minute?
No.
Nope, let's go. Let's keep going.
Merry Christmas.
All right, everybody's gone? No? Donna is still here.
I'll still see you next week.
Yes.
Bye.
Good night.
Yeah, just make sure.
I should have locked it through the last time you walked in.
Yeah. In theory, they were allowed to come back, but I don't know if anybody's really that interested.
They want to go home too.
They want to go home too, right? All right, so do we have to do the resolution first?
We do.
Okay.
We had a crazy person storm in during the last zoning board executive session, but it's not good.
Was it a regular, who was it?
I don't know.
Someone said that they knew him, that he used to live in Asbury Park, he moved the block.
Oh, nice. All right. That's right.
And showed up? Well, actually, we're still on the camera, right?
Yeah, we are, we are. Okay. We, go ahead.
We have an executive session motion that we have to go into executive session for.
And we have a resolution that we have to, in fact, have a motion to, to approve this resolution, to have the executive session?
Yes.
Move to, uh...
To approve.
Executive.
Okay, so we're...
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, so the resolution has moved.
All right. So moving on, as, again, the court ordered that the planning board approve the application of JLD Investment LLC.
Call roll call.
We don't have to call roll call, because we were already in, in regular session, but you know what? I guess we can see if there's anyone here. I don't think anyone's coming back, but you never know.
Kind of reminds me of the guy who wrote the Garfarlo decision, it is on 10 acres of Burnessville.
Okay, it's open?
For the record, everyone who was here for exec, executive session is back. So we have to approve a preliminary major subdivision, and a preliminary major subdivision establishes the terms and conditions of a final major subdivision application. So with a preliminary, they, the applicant still has to come back with five. They have to provide plans that are in conformity with the city's ordinances as far as final subdivisions go, as well as what's required under the MLWL for a final major subdivision. What a preliminary subdivision does is it protects them for a period of time under the current ordinances, so that if the city of Asbury Park made changes to the ordinance, they would still have a protected right in their six lot subdivision, even though they haven't perfected it. And they can't perfect it until they come back into this board for a final major subdivision. Any questions on that?
What's the timeframe?
Uh, off the top of my head, I believe it's three years, but it's a period of time, and they can also ask, there, there is an opportunity to ask for extensions as well. Sometimes what happens between the preliminary and the final is they're getting their other approvals. That might be necessary before they come back to the board. I don't know that that's going to happen here, because they're creating six fully conforming subdivided lots. So with that said, if there are any questions about the process and why we, why we do this, I set up a, a resolution, and I don't know if we want to approve the resolution tonight as far as memorializing, or if the board has any additional comments, obviously we'll have to memorialize the resolution at the next planning board meeting.
My suggestion is that a lot of...
The provisions that I wanted to just go over the board, here's the amended findings of fact. Properties located at 701, 705 Second Avenue, the north side of Second Avenue, and the west side of Bond Street identified as block 2703, Lot 3 on the city of Asbury Park tax map. Applicants proposing the demolition of a church that was constructed in about 1884 in a preliminary major subdivision to create six new single-family residential lots that range from 7,000 to 12,000 square feet. The board accepts the testimony applicants' witnesses and those of the public and objectors as provided during the hearings. The church was built around 1884, based on Sanborn area mapping. The building is listed on the Monmouth County Historical Inventory prior to submitting the application. The applicant attempted to negotiate with the city council an adaptive reuse of the structure for multifamily dwelling, which such proposal is not approved. By comment from the applicant's attorney, the applicant would prefer to reuse the structure by developing the property with multifamily residences instead of making the application for subdivision for single-family lots. Members of the public are concerned at the demolition of a historic structure and the removal of the architectural history of that structure, which has been present in Asbury for more than 125 years. Master plans provide guidance, master plan provides guidance for the development of the city. The master plan encourages the retention of historic structures and requires preservation and adaptive reuse of historic buildings and landmarks. However, the master plan is not the zoning ordinance. The board does not make a determination based on any deed restrictions that are set forth in the property chain of title or consider any testimony relative to deed restrictions in the chain of title. Pursuant to the after-said order of the Superior Court, the application is compliant with all zoning regulations to subdivide the property, and this is the important part, into a conforming six lot, single-family residential subdivision without waiver, variance, or deviation from the city's general ordinances, including compliance with the requirements of Chapter 30, et cetera, of the city of Asbury Park municipal ordinance and is subject to the terms and conditions set forth herein. And then I'm going to jump over to the therefore be it resolved by the planning board to approve with the following preliminary major subdivision approval with the following conditions. The major subdivision approval is limited to the protections pursuant to the municipal land use law and Chapter 30 of the general ordinances of the city of Asbury Park. Prior to final approval for major subdivision, the applicant shall be required to submit an application for final, final major subdivision with plans that conform to the requirements of the municipal land use law and the development and zoning ordinances of the city of Asbury Park, indoor zoning ordinance, unless approved at formal hearing of the city of Asbury Park Planning Board. No variance, deviations, or design waivers are approved with this resolution for approval of preliminary major subdivision. All testimony, evidence, and representations made by the witnesses and council for the applicant at the public hearings are incorporated herein in addition to the contents of this resolution. This approval is subject to the approval of the mayor and council, mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park for any encroachments existing or proposed into any city rights of way for future development of the property and any of the subdivided lots. All lighting on the property and within any of the lots within the subdivision shall comply with the city ordinances unless approved by subsequent amendments to the major subdivision application by the city of Asbury Park Planning Board. Future development shall incorporate street trees and landscaping according to the design standards set forth in Chapter 30 et cetera of the city development ordinance. Applicant will construct or contribute funds for the share of onsite and offsite improvements established by city ordinances and applicable state law. Applicant shall post performance and maintenance bonds and inspection fees as determined by the board engineer and/or city engineer pursuant to city ordinances and applicable state law, and the applicant will enter into a developer or redeveloper agreement as required by city ordinances and applicable state law. The applicant shall pay the appropriate water and sewer connection fees as determined by the city engineer pursuant to city ordinances and applicable state law. The approval is subject to the approval of any other county, state, or federal agency having jurisdiction over the project, including but not limited to those governing bodies or agencies identified in the board engineer's or planner's letters. In the event any other agency having jurisdiction over the project alters the plans and/or approval given to the project by the city planning board, applicant shall also notify the board and will present to the board set approvals for review and approval by the board. Applicant shall be responsible for publishing a notice of the decision in the Asbury Park press pursuant to the requirement of the statute. Applicant shall pay all professional nest grow fees and application fees in connection with the application as required by the city development ordinances and the New Jersey municipal land use law. Prior to the approval of any final map for major subdivision or as a condition of any resolution compliance for final major subdivision or as a condition prior to the development of any new law created by final major subdivision, the applicant and successors or signs shall be responsible to comply with performance and maintenance guarantees, development fees, sewer connection fees, public utility connection fees, affordable housing obligations and fees, construction permit fees, and any other fees routinely charged for the development of the property. Pursuant to NJSA 4055D 39 and 65, property taxes shall remain current prior to scheduling a hearing and during dependency of any application for final major subdivision application. Applicant shall enter into a developer's agreement as a condition of any final major subdivision approval as may be required in connection with future development of the property and/or any lot within the property. Applicant shall enter into any affordable housing obligation agreements as may be required by the major subdivision. Submission of subdivision plans for major subdivision approval shall comply with all development standards and plans, details according to the city development orders, including but not limited to the Section 30-55 et cetera. Future development shall comply with design standards, including those in ordinance Section 30, 56, 57, and 64. Future development of major subdivision shall comply with storm drainage, stormwater detain, detention, BMP, best management practices, I agree with that whole thing, according to Section 30-58, et cetera, and a best management practice manual shall be approved by the board engineer and/or city engineer and recorded with the county clerk. Off-street parking shall comply with the ordinance Sections 30-59 and 30-60, as well as the New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards. No deviation of these requirements has been requested by the application and no deviations are approved by the planning board with this resolution. Any fencing to be constructed shall comply with Section 30-633. Applicant shall contain, shall obtain other approvals such as CAPRA, NJDEP, RSIS, will serve letters from utilities, Soil Conservation District, et cetera. The application submitted and as represented by the applicant does not request any waivers, deviations of the city's development regulations and design standards or any variances from the city's zoning ordinances. And ultimately, the applicant is not, is only getting approval of a fully conforming subdivision. And the applicant shall adhere to these findings of fact unless further approvals given by this board.
May I ask a question? May I ask a question? Just when you had said all the way back a couple pages, all the testimony from the hearing is herein incorporated, or that line?
Accepted.
Like, basically, I took it to mean that all comments, like, everything that was done publicly is incorporated, there's a line.
So, are you talking about the board accepts the testimony of the applicant's witnesses and of those of the public and objectors as provided during the hearings?
That it was part of, I think that's the line. My question is that if you, so everything that went, all the public testimony that was part of the case hearing or whatever prior, is that all part of this record? Like, I don't, or is that all, like, it's a, it's a clean?
So, all of that testimony, the reason why we don't have to do a notice like you would typically do, we're not taking any new testimony. All of the testimony from the prior hearings are in, they've been heard by the board members who are eligible to vote, and it's weighed in the favor of the applicant, basically.
Okay, so I think the only question I have, it doesn't, I just, from my own knowledge, the, you have, there's language in there about, you know, the public comment, you were, there was specifically listing, like, the public. You referred, there was a couple references to, you know, had wished it had been an adaptive reuse or whatever. But there's not, is there not allowed to be any reflection of any of the board comments? Because now the board has to do something different. Meaning, like, it says the public felt this way, but the board doesn't say anything in this, is not allowed to say anything in the document, like, the board?
I, I mean, we can certainly add something. Here's what I would say, and the reason why I didn't want to adopt a resolution tonight, is if there's anything in addition that you, you want to add, feel free, I'm going to send you the draft, and feel free to make comments to add anything. But if you want to add something about comments from the board, you're, we're certainly welcome to add that to this.
Okay, I just wasn't sure what the legal, because it.
Well, so, so there's, there's the findings of fact.
Yeah.
And then separately, there's the conditions. What I, what I read really more was, the more important part is the conditions. But the findings of fact, if, if you think there's some additional findings of fact that should be added to the final version, I, I don't have a problem adding that. So, feel free to, you know, let me know what you want to add, and I'd be glad to do so. Okay?
But then, all the original hearings are still part of the public record?
All those original hearings are the, are the public record.
Right, that's what I was, I think, trying to understand. Because there's all those, you know, board members make comments throughout the public hearings, but, and then, so that's part of the record.
I mean, look, I suppose that someone could take this resolution and appeal it, but the court has already decided that, you know, if it's, if it's the applicant, that's one thing. I'm going to share this with the applicant too before memorialization and make sure they don't have any objections to anything. But if, if it's the public who wants to file, the court has already made its, its determination there.
And that resolution just killed the growing trees.
It did, but because a preliminary is not a final, you have, you have to put those conditions, otherwise you, you lose your right to do it later.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not.
And then that's, and that's why we, that's why we went through this process, so that we don't lose our right to do it later.
Correct.
Whatever, whatever we were asking for.
Yep.
So.
All right, so I'll put that together, I'll email it to the five of you who are eligible. But obviously, at this point, unless there are any questions about.
Can I get a copy too, because I'd like.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And so, and one last question. Then, before you said, but only one person need, you said, we only need one person.
To memorialize.
To memorialize.
What does that mean? I mean.
So, memorialization is at the next hearing when you, so most of the hearings, we don't have a resolution prepared. Most of the hearings, it was like the, the two tonight. The board makes a decision, and then we, as the attorneys, are tasked with preparing the resolution for final approval and memorialization. That's going to, that's going to lay out everything. That's your final legal document that says these are the terms and conditions of what was approved.
I think in the last meeting, Eric was the only one to give a vote on something. It was 1-0.
Yeah, and we do it, like, at the beginning of the meeting, when we approve resolutions, we technically only need one person.
Oh, I never knew that, you only need one person.
So, you need a, you need a majority of the people eligible to vote, but there's only one person eligible to vote.
That's a majority.
That's a majority. That person says yes or no.
But why is only, I'm sorry, be slow on this.
In that situation.
So, as an example, the next meeting.
Yeah.
Jennifer, you're, you're here, Eric's here, and Barbara's here.
Yeah, only two of us.
Jim, James is not here, Jim is not here, and Mayor Moore are not here. Two of the three of you have to vote yes.
I see, I see.
But if only one of you are here, but we still have a quorum, only, you're the only one eligible.
Understood, understood. It's still the same process as normal. This is normal.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I, got you.
Yeah. It's, my point is, it doesn't require a quorum of five.
Got you.
It only requires a quorum of who's eligible.
Understood.
Of who's eligible.
That makes sense, thank you. All right, so are we good?
We're good.
Or do we have to do anything else?
I have to vote. Unless anyone has any more questions? We have to move to.
We have to vote, right?
Yeah, we have to vote.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sadly.
And Jim? Okay. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Barbara Kerzak?
Yes, sadly.
Jen Souter?
Yes.
Eric Gallo?
Yes.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Moving to adjourn.
And was Yvonne, Yvonne not eligible, correct?
That's correct.
Just making sure. All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Have a great holiday.
Yes.
You too.